It is now six o'clock and we'll call the May ninth, 2023 City Commission Meeting to Order. Please call the roll.
Mayor Hattasol.
President.
Commissioner Butler.
President.
Commissioner Motta.
Here.
Commissioner Morse.
Present.
We have a quorum.
All right, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we want to go ahead and allow for public comment on the work session items tonight?
Well, sure. I move that if there's any public here, I'd like to just stop doing this. I think we always allow the public to speak. So it'd be easier to just assume that the public will speak and have a vote if we don't want the public to speak because this is just a little hurdle we jump over every other week. Anyway, so I move that we allow the public to speak at public comments, any of those.
All right, is there a second? I'll second it. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Butler.
Yes.
Commissioner Motta.
Yes.
Commissioner Morse.
Yes.
Mayor Hattasol.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Very good. All right, we will move on to the items on the work session agenda for tonight, which starts out with the Beyond Tomorrow Downtown Plan Update. John.
Everyone, thank you for your time. I am clearly not Ben. He apologizes. He is out of the office on a personal matter, but... Thank you. The most important thing we wanted to provide this evening was an update on where we are at in this process. As we kind of work through second quarter of this year, we continue to do research that will inform the background plan. We continue to hold our Steering and Technical Committee meetings. In fact, we just held them last week. But most exciting aspect is we started the community outreach portion of the plan process. First step was to issue a community survey and a business survey, a downtown business survey. And for data collection purposes, we have closed those. They will remain open in case we run into individuals who haven't taken them and we'll allow them to continue to take them. But just for data collection purposes, we needed an end date in order to start having the background report informed by the data. And then we've also started stakeholder meetings. These are one-on-one conversations or focus groups with small groups, and these are based on the same kind of topic areas. If you'll remember that the background report has been structured around, and we'll talk a little bit about that. With that in mind, we're still on track for a fourth quarter presentation to you all. I'll talk a little bit later about a Brownfields grant that we're going to be able to structure via the downtown plan. And so having that come onboard, we will extend our delivery date to you all, possibly not December, but probably January, February of next year, so not too far off track. Real quick about the community and business surveys. These are the numbers we reached. We were very happy with that. Again, it's always nice to work in a community that's very engaged and responsive, especially about districts that they're really passionate about, which includes downtown. And we want to thank the Downtown Manhattan Incorporated for their help in reaching the businesses, too. They helped with the surveys on that. The first general area was economy and visitation. Again, some of the key themes we heard, you know, it's a beloved area. It's an area people want to see invested in, and they also want to see what other opportunities are out there for different areas within the downtown. Specifically, we got a heavy response to this survey question, which, to paraphrase, which area outside of the historic core do you see the most potential for development? And the two responses that received the most interest were the mall, especially the east side of the mall, and then this southern edge, southwest edge of downtown, if you will, down by Fort Riley, which is Area E here. So some of the plan direction as we move ahead is how do we maintain a high quality of life for both downtown residents, but also residents of Manhattan, while maintaining this other balance of being a regional hub? And then the third is being an opportunity zone for visitors and tourists as well, so having to balance all three of those audiences. And this is looking at potentially what's called a 24/7 district, meaning increased residential, so more people live in this district, which means they want dinner, they want groceries, they want more retail at more hours that are currently happening. If we increase visitors and tourists, they may want longer extended hours. Chicken and egg conversation, one thing has to come before the other. But maintaining that local business flavor that we all love and appreciate about the In terms of housing and demographic, we got a lot of response about the potential for additional residential units, a lack of them. So something we're really looking to as we finish the background report and look to the plan, but specifically what is in demand in terms of price range and also structure type, two things that you'll hear a lot when you attend any meeting about housing as well. Again, fostering the economic conditions, incentivizing this kind of development downtown, making it desirable not just for residents, but for developers to see the potential in taking a risk on maybe a structure type or a density level they haven't built before. But we have our work ahead of us, too, in that we need to help them identify, well, is there a potential goal for a number of units? Is there a range of household incomes? What do structure types look like? And so as we wrap up the research portion and start doing more and more outreach, we'll touch base with a lot of these groups, developers and housing experts, to help us fill those gaps in. Another aspect of downtown that people appreciate that we want to continue is the streetscape and the overall environment. There are some opportunities, though, especially on these side streets outside of the historic core. There's an opportunity to take what beautiful streetscape we have and see what investment opportunities there are to spread that out, improve not just the aesthetic quality, but the safety and pedestrian experience, as well as bike infrastructure. And then from an economic development standpoint, how can we create the conditions that we add more businesses to a lot of these empty spaces, if you will, these unfilled spaces where you now have more energy, you have more activity, and you have more, in the industry, we call eyes on the street. Eyes on the street increases an enthusiasm for being in a place, it increases the energy, but it also increases the sense of safety and security in a place. You'll see an example here of some exciting stuff we're going to be able to show you later this summer. This is actually coming out of an intern in our department, an architecture intern from K-State. He's doing some really awesome things that we think are going to get people excited and engaged in having these conversations. So again, we want to maintain the high quality of streetscape we do have, but how can we spread it out, build that energy, and help create the, what's called the pedestrianization of spaces, especially in a lot of our surface-level parking lots, if you can visualize those. What they do psychologically is they create a distance and a level of discomfort for pedestrians. So think about a visitor going from the conference center and wanting to walk downtown. They're going to hit several of these kind of dead zones, if you will, where it doesn't feel as safe, it doesn't feel as comfortable, it's not as exciting. So how can we pedestrianize those areas as well? And we're looking into opportunities that are available through other communities, K-studies, and then best practices. And then how can we unlock some of these empty spaces, including the parking spaces, for this economic development we talked about, too? Is there an opportunity to create more experience, create more retail, create more commercial, so that we're actually maximizing the opportunity there instead of this kind of dead zone? I'm going to skip this slide because this is a Ben Schmeehl slide, and I'm not as smart as Ben Schmeehl. This is a very exciting slide. It looks to commodify the impact of these empty spaces, and I'm going to let him do that when he returns. And it's very cool, but I'm just not that smart.
That last comment of lowering the cost of walking, is that supposed to explain that?
That would explain that, yep. In other words, but we have to be careful because we want to make sure when Ben's talking about cost, not just financial cost. It's that, do we lose somebody when they start to walk and they say, well, this is just a hot bear in parking lot, and they turn around and walk away? So it's not just financial cost, but it's, again, that psychological cost. Are we losing them as an opportunistic consumer? Are we losing them as somebody who will go away and say, you know, I had the greatest time in Manhattan? Or will they say, you know, it's filled with a lot of empty spaces? So that's kind of the reason I didn't want to talk on it either. Obviously, a big aspect is transportation, not just vehicle transportation and access to downtown, but we also are looking at parking, public transit, bicycle infrastructure. Again, getting a lot of good feedback on this that we'll bring back to you. And informing the plan direction, looking at the ability to capture current transportation habits, that's, again, is where are they accessing downtown and how are they accessing it? How can we increase walkability and increase bike and pedestrian safety? Also, you know, one of the focus groups we'll work with is via ATA bus and the MPO, and they'll help us inform a lot of the long-term transportation aspects of this, and they'll help us identify maybe some stakeholders that we need to meet with as well. So again, it's a combination of broader community outreach through surveys, public meetings, charrettes, and then doing more focused conversations and stakeholder groups so that we're getting the best of both worlds. We did ask a question about public safety on the community and business survey, and very glad to see these numbers. Overall, the feedback was super positive. 1% of the survey respondents said they felt unsafe. Again, that's out of 1,400 responses. Only 15% of crimes in 2022 were in the downtown area, and even among those, the majority were traffic-related. Obviously, one of the core values and benefits we have is our historic core in the downtown. And so we wanted to make sure we address that in terms of the questions we ask, but also the direction of the plan, maintaining that character on Points Avenue. But again, looking at how can this be leveraged to? What opportunities are there? And again, not just what kind of financial opportunities are there that we need to help educate developers and residents about historic tax credits, but also looking at market trends, how spaces are being used and how historic preservation is being expected from some consumers to kind of, again, create that energy and create that excitement from a district they visit. Again, if they've been to another city, I think of something like Bricktown, I think of the riverfront along Wichita's downtown, and thinking through how does historic preservation play into that. One aspect we definitely want to keep in mind as we look for informing the plan is that we're now looking into mid-century and maybe even more current structures, are now what we call historic, and what kind of opportunities are there? Again, to leverage financial opportunities, but also to meet current and future demands, housing, commercial, retail. And I know it's been quite a while, but just another reminder of the power of the downtown is it has these special relationships with these adjacent areas where they both will feed into the success of downtown, but downtown will also spur them. As a reminder, we're calling these auxiliary plans or auxiliary areas. This includes the McCall Triangle, the Goodenauer Blumott Neighborhood, Points Corridor, and then the riverfront area, if you will. The struggle was, again, as a reminder, the downtown plan is a pretty massive effort. It's going to require a lot of outreach and input, a lot of analysis, but also there's a level of importance for all these areas that made it necessary to have them be their own separate efforts and separate plans. Again, here's the timeline. We're looking for the end of the year, but at this point, I'd like to pause and talk about the Foothills Regional Council Brownfield Grant that they received through the EPA that we are excited to be a recipient of. And we've already had an initial meeting. It looks like that will be moving forward, and that will be looking at that southern portion of downtown, connecting, excuse me, adjacent to the riverfront, and then looking along Fort Riley Boulevard. These are some of the stakeholder groups that I mentioned earlier that we'll be reaching out to. Here's the riverfront, Riley County Government, a huge entity in the downtown, the farmers' market, which we've already met with and started conversations with them, as well as K-State student groups we've met with. And we're asking our steering committee is to help us serve as ambassadors in identifying key individuals to speak with, arranging some of those, and potentially being involved. So that is all I have for that update. Questions about the process or where we're at currently?
I have several. Have you met? I know that we're going through this ADA study right now, and several people were here last night at the Parks and Rec meeting who are interested in certain aspects of that. Have you met with anyone in the ADA disability community or talked to them? Or there's an area agency on aging in this district, and I wondered if you met with them about senior citizens and their abilities?
We have not, but we're open to meeting anybody who represents or works in the ADA capacity.
So they need to be in touch with you, is that how it's?
Yes, that'd be great. As for your second question, yes. The senior population have been identified as one of the stakeholder groups we'll need to reach out to, and Ben has already made...
I don't see them listed here, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, no, no problem. I appreciate that. Ben just made initial contact with the senior center director this week, so, yeah, they probably didn't make it to the slide, but that is a group.
So Ben is the contact person?
Either one of us.
Okay, either one.
Yep.
I was thinking of the area agency on aging, too.
Yeah, they would be included.
Fourth in Houston.
Right. They would be included if we reached out.
They're in your target zone, probably. Let me look at the senior center. Are they in one of your ovals?
The senior center would be the northern edge of probably the downtown district, correct?
Yeah. Fourth Street, pretty much. I just don't want to, I want to continue to be inclusive of the senior citizens and the disabled in the downtown area. I don't want what happened in Aggieville to affect downtown. I want us to have enough of a different approach that we do it a little differently. And I, let's see. I wanted to just touch base about the Brownfield project. Tell me the boundaries of it again for the public.
They have not been defined yet, Commissioner. So yes, we will return that.
I was going to say, I'm on the regional council, and I don't know the boundaries yet, so I was asking, so I thought I'd better ask and find out. So they haven't been defined?
Correct, correct. And I appreciate that, but no, we just, you know, it's a step process, and at this point, we were still waiting on the official green light, if you will. So where we're at currently this week, we'll wrap up identification of potential parcels, and then that will have to be sent off to the STANTEC, which is FHRC's consultant. And how that works is it's kind of like a back and forth, because they're going to have to, they'll review our initial parcels, if that makes sense, and then they will build their estimate on cost of the project based on that. So at this point, there is no boundary, because part of that is they may eliminate some of those parcels, because it takes the estimate too high, if that makes sense.
The cost will help shape the...
I have one thing to add. As part of that, one of the other reasons we can't really give you a strict boundary is because it's a complete voluntary basis. So if there's a property owner who's not interested, they could opt out, and that might kind of change what that area looks like.
I'm familiar with the process and the voluntary. I just didn't see it identified as a space, so that's yet to come, because it needs to be a...
Correct, yes.
There are boundaries usually that these sites are...
And to Stephanie's point, that outreach to the neighborhood business owners will be done between city staff and STANTEC, both at the beginning and then throughout the process.
Okay, good. What do you envision that project doing? I guess I have, I guess I can find...
In terms of, in relation to the downtown?
Yeah, it's going to be the river and the, what'd you say? And south, is it south of Fort Riley Boulevard?
It will be, again, without any hard district, it will be along south, excuse me, Fort Riley Boulevard, correct. But we're also, this week, we're also examining some of the properties, commercial properties that go north of Fort Riley by about a block, block and a half, only because they have a history of heavy commercial or industrial use in the past. And so again, that would be the impetus for an environmental review is any property that's had a commercial or heavy use. But in terms of answering your question, the idea is by running, by being able to leverage that funding and study, we'll be able to, again, build that history of parcels so that we understand environmental conditions, but we will also use that as a springboard for better understanding current zoning, and then what is a potential of that land, if that makes sense. So looking at any kind of property down here is, is there a greater potential to leverage that with the riverfront or connect it to the downtown? With connecting being in quotes, what that means to be connected. Could mean several things, streetscape improvements, bike trail improvements, you know, trying to understand that both resident and consumer and business owner experience as Fort Riley divides the two, if that makes sense.
I wanted to ask, too, my observation was that with the Aggieville plan, that Morrow has been pretty much defined as the historic part for aesthetics and historic. But in the downtown area, and I can't really think of many buildings that aren't on Morrow, you know, that are that historic, but in the downtown area, there are some that aren't on just Points. And I want to be sure that we don't just strictly limit it to Points. Excuse me. If there are historic buildings on another block from Points, so I don't know how you say that, but to make it not narrow, definitely.
What I would respond is, you have no need to worry because Ben Schmeehl's on the case, so.
Okay, I hope so.
Yep.
I also want to just talk about the aesthetics, and we talked about maintaining the historic nature of Aggieville, and that ended up being just Morrow. But the other areas of Aggieville are open to any kind of development, you know, not in keeping with the, and I'd like for us to respect the historic nature of downtown and not have glass buildings and metal buildings and keep the integrity of our limestone as the theme, which means that, you know, as best we can to keep, I don't know, I like the separate, I like the brick in Aggieville and the limestone in the downtown area as a kind of separation. I'm wondering about, do we have a way to limit the number of churches in the downtown area on Points, or do we not have any?
I think my lawyer would advise me not to answer that question, Counselor.
I just wondered, in the storefronts? I mean, we can regulate. We can't?
It's an allowed use, so we wouldn't be able to restrict that. I don't believe, yeah, that probably goes back to the city attorney, but typically you can't regulate like a church where it would be allowed with other compatible uses.
But we set what was allowed, right?
Yes. Again, that's, I think I would go and probably ask Katie what she would advise us for, or how she would advise us on that.
I just, you know, I just think that our retail and commercial businesses, that it causes an interruption in that commercial nature, and so I'd rather we try to focus. I guess I'm curious, too, about if you're talking about how much housing in this immediate area that you feel like are needed?
Correct, and the question is still outstanding, Commissioner. It has not even begun to be addressed.
Okay. Because I know you're, we've been encouraging second-floor home housing units in the downtown area, but I sure would not like to see, excuse me, a limestone building taken out in the interests of an apartment building-type substitution. I hope that we maintain the integrity of our downtown, because it's a special place, too. Thank you. I can't think of any others. Those were semi...
I think we need to continue to chat with the Commerce Bank people, because if they're planning on demolishing the tower and the building, and I'd heard they were just going to come back with a one-story bank building, which is a terrific waste of land with that two-thirds of a block or so they got, that could house 57 units and a bank on the main floor and housing and stuff above it. So, yeah, whenever we run into Sean, somebody needs to make sure that headquarters in Kansas City knows, it's like, don't do that! We've got great plans for your land, and we'll do it. Yeah, you can put in there what you sort of want, but I think a developer would salivate at the opportunity to do something much cooler with that piece of land besides just have a bank, take part of that, and then the rest of it sort of wasted parking lot that we, and we've lost out on an awesome piece of land that could really be something cool. And so if you keep talking to Sean, and I'll keep talking to Sean, and hopefully they can get Commerce at the table to bring them into a bigger vision of what that thing could be as opposed to what their potential, ah, just throw a drive-through bank there or something, and that land is lost for a much better value.
Well, we appreciate that, Mayor. Do we know Sean?
Yeah. Rotary Club. Okay. All right, you guys got any other questions here?
I was just curious, and again, you're deferring part of this, about that walking past the parking lots and the dead zones and all that, because I know or just, I don't recall that in the meetings I was at, but I do recall every, our discussions on parking and not wanting to take away any more street-level parking, so how do those things reconcile together?
I think it's maximizing what opportunities we do have there. I'd say that the majority of off-street parking is just currently, current surface-level parking, and so I think it's really analyzing the, is there a greater value there than just surface-level parking? I'd say the majority of on-street parking is probably not going to be part of our analysis unless we hear otherwise through our stakeholder groups, which would include the parking department here at the city giving us feedback that they hear otherwise. Yeah.
Thank you, everybody. All right, we will, nope, nobody here to comment, so we will move on to item two, which is review and discuss ordinance resolutions that are established at the Boards of Bylaws and Municipal Audit Committee, Aggieville and Downtown Business Improvement District Discussion.
All right, this is my last board committee review presentation, so you're welcome.
I hope you got the circle of life up there.
It's my third slide. Don't you worry, Mayor. All right, we're going over the financial boards tonight. We have two BID, Business Improvement District Boards, Aggieville and downtown, and the Municipal Audit Committee. Once again, after feedback tonight, over June and July, we're going to be taking updated bylaws to these boards, or new bylaws if they don't have any, getting those approved, and then coming back in August and September for your final consideration. There it is, the circle of life as it relates to the relationship between the governing body, the advisory boards that they create and appoint, and their relationship with our staff liaisons and the city managers, so we can have consistent communication with you all on what these boards are doing and how they're providing recommendations to you all. These next two slides are very similar. It goes over the Aggieville Business Improvement District, how it's created and kind of made up, and the Downtown Business Improvement District. I will say both of these are not codified in our code of ordinances at all. The only really way they're codified is annually you all adopt in October... Um, the only really way they're codified is annually you all adopt in October the ordinance that creates and set forth, the, you know, programs and parameters for each BID. So, if you, you know, search Business Improvement District, again, in the, uh, Code of Ordinances, nothing would show up. But there is an ordinance that you all adopt every year, and there's this small section in it that says, there's a board with certain amount of members, and they meet to set the things that you consider. So, we would wanna look to, uh, codifying that, uh, in our Code of Ordinances, just to be a little bit more transparent. Uh, have a little bit more than a couple sections as it relates to the makeup of the board. Uh, but then you would all would still, uh, you know, following state statute, uh, be adopting an annual ordinance as it relates to the fees and the boundaries that you're setting forth in the BID. So, like that, uh, second, uh, bullet point right there, you all, you all are considering that annual ordinance as it relates to the boundary, the budget that that BID is, um, creating, how the fees are calculated and assessed. Uh, and those are assessed to businesses in the district. The Aggieville, uh, Business Improvement District has seven members, uh, and it outlines in there, their three-year terms, uh, with no term limits. Our finance director, uh, as well as other finance staff, services, staff liaison to those groups. Not a lot of feedback from the Business Improvement District related to Aggieville, um, other than that they thought they might wanna consider term limits, uh, but they were okay with the three-year terms, and they were comfortable with, uh, the seven members. It's, uh, pretty consistent for them to tr- hopefully get seven members, uh, each time. Same exact kinda explanation for the Downtown Business Improvement District. The only difference there is, uh, they have two-year terms, they have nine members. They were, uh, one thing that they did note was that it's harder to get members to their boards, so they kind of thought possibly, uh, reducing that down to seven members, uh, just because it's been hard to get people on those, uh, on those boards. Uh, so, at the time, when, when I spoke with them a few weeks ago, a majority of them were kind of in favor of shifting that possibly to seven members. They are okay, uh, shifting to three-year terms, like every other board, so we're trying to get pretty much all the boards on the same page as it relates to the number of years, um, that they, uh, serve. Uh, and they weren't, uh, in favor of term limits, uh, and I gave them the feedback, then majority of you all weren't necessarily in, in favor with, uh, kind of a de facto, having boards have term limits. So, uh, we're gonna continue to discuss that with them, but, again, not a lot of, uh, specifics related there.
Do we, um, on either board, do we care? Or do we, is there, are any, are, are there any guidelines about whether it's retail or professional offices or?
As it relates to the members?
Yeah, who could, I don't remember who.
Nope, they just need to, um,
Right open?
That is some feedback I did ask them about, cause it, again, it doesn't, they don't have bylaws, neither of them have bylaws. And in their, uh, that ordinance that only has two sections, it doesn't have any eligibility requirements. So, that was one thing that, uh, we were gonna talk about, a- and most of them wanted it to be limited to you either needed to work in the business district, own property in the business district, or own a business or manage a business in the business district. So, they, both boards were in favor of,
Supporting them.
Uh, supporting that, because right now, technically, anybody could serve on either of these boards, and there wouldn't be a requirement either way. So, that was one of the main things that, uh, they gave, they gave feedback on.
What, what I hear most from Aggieville are the people who, uh, aren't, uh, who are more in retail and aren't, don't feel included or involved in the Aggieville, in the, uh, business district. And that it's primarily.
That, there wasn't any feedback, uh, related to divvying that out. So, I know some of the boards we've talked about, you have to have, you know, like on the Code Appeals Board, one of them has to be an electrician, one of them has to follow this one. There wasn't, uh, any, uh, direction from either of these boards to say, one of them has to be retail, one of them has to be commercial, uh, one of them has to be a restaurant, so.
Yeah.
They were, uh, again, it's, it's hard to, to get people to volunteer on the board, so they're pretty much just open to anyone who's, who's working in the district or has a stake there. The, uh.
I think they just need to come forward, I guess, to let us know.
Yep. Uh, the only other thing, a- again, and this gets into the bylaws that they're going to adopt, is, uh, you know, nowhere does, does it say in either of these things that the business director, so, uh, the Aggieville Business Director or the Downtown Business Director serves as some ex officio-type member that does a lot of the work. Uh, so, we want that written out within the bylaws, uh, about what, you know, is asked of them. Uh, some of these things aren't an expectation of our staff to do, it's the expectation of the business director to do, so we want to call some of that stuff out in the bylaws and possibly, uh, the ordinance. And then really kind of solidify, uh, the ex officio member being the business director, who's kind of a non-voting member, but needs to attend the meetings, provide updates, provide reports, uh, and help, uh, that annual process. So, we're gonna draft bylaws for, for both of them and, and bring those back to y'all. But those are the, the really only, the main new things that we wanted to kind of make sure were, were codified in there. I gave, you know, each board an opportunity to talk about their annual processes. Um, you know, there's been, there's a ebb and flow of the history of, of the DBID and ABD as it relates to how difficult or hard it's been sometimes to collect fees, uh, you know, we get changeover in businesses. You're, you're assessing the business, you know, you're not assessing the property owner or anything like that, so the business manager can change annually, um, the business itself can turn over in that time, so there, there's been some difficulties. Uh, over the last couple of years, there's, there has been some, some feedback from boards about, is there an easier way to do this? Can you assess the property owner, um, through some type of assessment? But, at the end of the day, didn't, uh, really get any feedback, uh, strongly from either of the boards to pursue something different than, than what's going on. So, it's, it's kind of a continued matter of assesses, or, you know, get as many, uh, people to pay the fee as, as you can and go from there. And then it really, again, it gets back to the business director on how successful they are, getting the list, going door-to-door, having that relationship with those, uh, businesses and managers so that they understand what the BID is, uh, the purpose it serves, and why it's important to pay fees. That's all I have on BIDs. If not, if you don't have any questions, I can move on to Municipal Audit Committee. Okay, and the mayor's really happy that he gets to hear this presentation again after a couple of weeks ago. Created by a resolution, uh, back in twenty-ten, this is something that's recommended from the GFOA, uh, that, uh, you know, cities have, uh, uh, do an audit and have a committee made up of, uh, representatives from the public. So, certainly an important board. Uh, right now, uh, it has four members, uh, three members are at large, or I think the mayor just appointed someone at the last, uh, meeting, so you're, you're at full capacity and one, uh, seated commissioner that serves kind of an annual term. It has in there preference given to, uh, people with accounting or auditing, uh, experience of that nature. It's not a requirement, but, uh, it is a pre- preference, and that was, uh, the Municipal Audit Committee wanted to, to keep that, that as a preference.
I thought it was required. I was trying to find an accountant that would do it. But it doesn't, it, that, it's just, uh, preference.
Preference, yep.
I don't think it said that in the instructions, okay.
Uh, their resolution says they meet at least semi-annually. Uh, right now, you're all meeting quarterly, uh, which, uh, Rena's, you know, got them on a good schedule of kind of how they're operating annually, so they wanted to can, uh, you know, keep doing that from a quarterly basis. Same staff liaison, Rena. Uh, the bylaws had a lot of similar provisions, uh, in the resolution. However, the, the bylaws get really, you know, so, a, a lot of the PowerPoints I've been giving you all and kind of refined purposes have been very, uh, condensed, they've been trying to be very more to the point. The Municipal Audit Committee i- is kind of the complete opposite. It is a very technical committee that looks a lot of different stuff, and their bylaws go into a lot of, uh, specifics uh, that I'll, that I'll get into here later, um, at my next slide. But, uh, no term limits and, and no, uh, feedback from the board otherwise on, on doing term limits.
Talk about the expanded functions before you go past it.
So, that, that'll be, uh, this slide right here.
Okay.
Um, if you'd like, let me just make sure, uh, eligibility requirements, tenants, yeah. There were some discrepancies, uh, but we're gonna clean all that up when they adopt the kind of, the new bylaw format that you all have. So, from the bylaw perspective, the only, I, I guess, big change that we might consider is how we look at the responsibilities as they're outlined in the resolution, as well as in the, uh, bylaws. So, here you can kind of see a long list of the process that, um, the Municipal Audit Committee goes through. Uh, have, they work with our auditors, they work, um, you know, during the audit process to examine a lot of different things, analyze reports, uh, present, uh, the audit findings to the city commission and make recommendations, uh, as it relates to that, as well as just other, um, kind of financial management policies. The bylaws, uh, is a lot longer than these four bullets, it's like a couple of pages as it goes into the different types of financial statements, internal controls, uh, compliance, uh, areas. So, after all the conversation with the Municipal Audit Committee about that, they understood the importance, uh, about those long lists, uh, that were, you know, provided in your packet, uh, it, within their bylaws. And the, the feedback we got was city staff was gonna work with Rena, the finance director, to kind of, how can we create a, a happy medium here where you're not, uh, you know, having this exhaustive list, which a lot of the times I don't think you get to, uh, with four quarterly meetings. You know, they're not hitting all of those bullets, but how can we generalize, but make it specific, uh, in the bylaws a- about some of these four areas, which are all still important. Reviewing financial statements and the results of the audit, looking at internal controls, uh, you know, effectiveness of our systems and technologies, um, looking at external audits, how we're being compliant, but not necessarily list everything. So, all that to say, me and Rena are gonna work together to kind of look at those bylaws and try and condense it down, and then we're gonna bring those back to the Municipal Audit Committee in, I think, I mean, in July, and, uh, and then bring that back to you all. But we, we haven't had that kind of opportunity yet to revise it. Don't think it's gonna be anything drastic, we're just trying to rework the, the purpose statements.
I just wondered, Mark, your impression of how important this committee is, if you, like in the past, I think it met once a year. Maybe meeting twice a year now, I, or you did talk about quarterly now. But, just, I mean, I know it's a recommendation, but what does, uh, it's not just come together for an hour and have a good time visiting, it, it, how serious is it?
Well, it, the, the big thing lately, for the last couple of years, is the fact that the finance department's been so understaffed that they've, uh, there's been,
Yeah.
more concern at the, of how, how things are going, and a desire to help make that, make that less of a burden. So.
Have you made recommendations and?
Well, that's the thing, I don't know if, if we're the, we're the source of, of the committee, that whole, if you go back a slide, that, that first bullet point of recommending an independent firm to do the audit. I don't know that the committee really does that, but since there's a limited number of potentials, uh, auditors out there, I'm not sure if that's really something that we're doing a lot of, but we're signing off on whoever they can find, go ahead, Mayor.
There's a shortage of accountants.
So, one of the reasons why the Municipal Audit Committee was formed was to, that first bullet, to assist with that. And as Mayor Hadasal mentioned, um, a lot of our auditing firms are changing their niche or their focus. So, a lot of them do not focus on, um, a gap type of audit that we are required to fulfill. Um, some of them are going towards just, um, cash basis only K-MAG audits. And so, we do have to, every five years, go out and, um, do an RFP for a new auditing firm. And so, in the past, the, um, Municipal Audit Committee has helped with that review and selection. I don't know who else would, um, put their, um, proposal in these days just because of just how staffing has changed over within auditing firms as well and their focus points. But that was the original reason why we, um, created that. Um, in terms of the Municipal Audit Committee, um, yeah, we do meet quarterly now, um, and that's just to provide updates, again, as Mayor Hadasal said about our staffing, but they also help with championing our new, um, ERP system that we're looking towards, um, procuring within the city. They do have the background of business and, um, some actually governmental accounting that have served on the committee in the past, and so they understand the importance of those things. They do provide re- recommendations to our auditors regarding things they've heard in the community about internal controls, departments that they need to focus on each year when they're doing their internal control audits. They review a report annually about all of our grants that we receive and making sure that we're complying with all of those federal regulations. Um, the, the departments are doing that, but they provide a report so we can present that to the audit committee as well. Having it quarterly provides them also the opportunity to get updates from our auditors as well as HE, AGH, the financial firm that we use, to assist with some of our audit prep. And, um, and then the last meeting towards the year is when we actually present the audit findings to you all, and so they play a role in that as well.
Okay.
Meeting more than four times a year is not necessary, but I don't think anything less than two would be beneficial there.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, any other questions about?
I've got a question, it's not necessarily just for the audit board, but with all the boards and all the stuff we looked at, and I thought we talked about this once, and I don't know if there's anything in our kind of master document of how everything's supposed to work. Do we have any limits on the number of boards a person can serve on?
Two.
Two, good.
That's in the updated resume.
I thought we had something in there, and I just, was too lazy to go back and look, so I just thought I'd ask you.
All right, anybody else? There you go.
All right.
Run with it as you.
We'll be back with some updated bylaws, hopefully, at the end of the summer.
All right, very good.
Thank you.
All right, well, that wraps up the work session agenda items, so we will move on to the city manager briefing.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, commissioners. Uh, a few things to cover, and, uh, before we get to the planning chart, uh, first thing I wanted to bring up was, uh, we need to kind of set a schedule for future radio shows, uh, kind of going forward. And, uh, wanted to see if Commissioner Motta was available, uh, for the sixteenth or if he still has some teaching obligations.
My grades are turned in, so.
Happy to report.
Yeah, so I can do the sixteenth.
You wanna do June too? You wanna go ahead and do the June meetings as well?
Yeah, I should be able to do the, um, June, 'cause I don't think there'll be any time where I'm gonna be away during those.
So, yeah, I should be able to do those. All right. Who'd like, and then, uh, typically, I know we've been jumping around, uh, for that, but we'd be back to the mayor, uh, if you wanna do July. Is that all right? And then, when, do you wanna do August?
Sure.
And then Linda, September?
I think that was my, one of my original months.
And then we back to John for October, and then we back to Mark for November, and when for December? That make sense? Some of that might get interrupted with, uh, uh, elections. I'm not sure if the radios, you know, sometimes the radio has different policies relative to candidates.
Yeah.
When does all, all fall?
That's the case, I guess I'm stuck.
I'm good. When and I can do them.
All right, appreciate that feedback. Uh, some upcoming meetings, we've got, uh, Good Morning Manhattan is, uh, next Thursday, May eighteenth, at Four Points. And that are, that's the legislative wrap-up with the area legislators. So far, I think Mark's the only one that's indicated he's planning to attend that. Uh, then we'll have a joint city-county meeting, uh, here, also on the eighteenth. And that will be a presentation by the, uh, MPO, uh, with a proposal. And that will be a presentation by the MPO with a proposal to look at the MPO kind of leading the effort to develop a electric vehicle readiness plan. So it's really kind of the first step that we should take as a community. I know you've had some public comments relative to, you know, don't feel like we're prepared for it. The focus nationally and statewide has really been on the primary interstate corridors to be able to have that infrastructure in place. We're starting to see some of that now branch out beyond that, now that there are grants in place for some of that. But it really is more effective, this planning effort is is comprehensive in nature because it will engage with the energy suppliers and what their capacity is to supply that, or if there are third-party entities that would contract with the energy suppliers to put in infrastructure or units of government that would do that and operate them and maintain them. So and then where should you put these? Obviously, recent news, I don't remember what state it was, but an old converted parking garage that collapsed because electric vehicle, and it was mostly full of electric vehicles, which are heavier.
Heavier than.
So those are, those are just things to, so and 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 they are more, at least there are fire hazards as well as, you know, emission issues if they do catch fire. So those are, you have to think about, probably need to be in a clear area as opposed to a confined area type of thing. So just stuff like that. And just, it'll really, I think, be a good process that we can get, there's grant funds that will support this. And I think that's what Jared has in mind to cover that day and what that might, what that might mean. So I think it'll be a good discussion as we look to kind of where that might be. And then policies for right-of-way control and and different aspects for having pipes in the ground to be able to supply it. You know, it's, I think it is a different, a different concept. And if, you know, obviously, we weren't excited about getting into it as a, as an entity where we were going to have to give the electricity away originally before Evergy came along, because Westar wasn't willing to do it. Evergy was willing to do it, to where they would provide the equipment and meter it and sell it themselves. So we're just, we're just providing space for them to occupy that. So those are a lot of those issues as to, you know, how is that gonna, you know, are there third parties like there are gas? You know, you have all kinds of different gas stations and quick, quick stations that provide fuel. So will that, that really hasn't been developed yet on the electric side of things and how that might work. So one of the key aspects to that is the capacity of the supplier, really. I know there's been a comment that, you know, if 25% of the households switch to EV, they wouldn't have enough power to be able to meet that demand currently. So those are, those are a critical piece of that, that, that component.
I think we've had people here at the city commission ask us to begin to think about them, that they have needs now and our community doesn't meet them. So I think it's important that we get started in that understanding. I don't know, we, we probably may not be able to solve everything, but at least we'll be much more aware of, like, I don't even know where all of the electric charging stations are here and where, what the capabilities are. So I'm interested in, in knowing more.
Whether they're those rapid charges or they're just when we're, you need a, you need a lunch counter to hang out.
Right. So those are, those are all of that components. And, you know, when I learned of the grant funds available, you know, we've had a conversation with the the MPO. We felt like that was an appropriate entity to kind of pursue that, because they have relationships with KDOT that are working on the statewide plans as well. So anyway, we'll have an update on that. There's no intergovernmental meeting in May. We have scheduled Flag Day celebrations, so that's Wednesday, June fourteenth, here at City Hall at the north entrance at nine AM. Mayor Hadasal will be speaking and participating along with several others as a result of that. I've also, Ned Seaton reached out to us and would like to help co-sponsor Manhattan Day on June third. So they're willing to provide some of the buns and we waive the block party permits and that, that fees for that. So we're planning to proceed with with that participation as well. I'm at the Riley County Commission this Thursday for my bi-monthly update and then over at Pot County on June twelfth. And then I know there was, many of you were copied about, discussion about the new Aggieville sign following our dedication ceremony. And is it gone? Not yet, okay. Well, we've, we've had some discussions and we've decided to just remove the welcome to. And so it just says Aggieville. All right?
I bet somebody would like to buy that welcome to and put it on their building.
Is that a collectible?
Okay, good.
All right.
Is that going to happen in the next few weeks or?
This week.
This week.
Well, it's good to know.
Before graduation.
I sent Bob Strom and all two emails.
All right, then, kind of, as we kind of get into, so the next couple of legislative meetings are both fairly full. I did want to mention that on the sixteenth meeting, I had communicated with the commissioners about possibly changing that starting time. Some of us would like to attend the retirement ceremony for Sue Peterson, longtime government relations manager for Case State, and it conflicted with our meeting time. So we would like to move our meeting back from six to six-thirty, so we can just see there, be there and say thanks and 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 make it here. Because it is a full night. So if there's no objections to that, we'll start a call for a special, it'll have to be a special meeting. So we'll get that call developed to start that at six-thirty on the sixteenth. Obviously, one of the things we have on that particular meeting is the resolutions to fill the commissioner, former Commissioner Ready's seat. And then that resolution, which we did provide you an advanced copy of, hopefully you've had a chance to look at that, opened a feedback on, on that, but would create that fourth position then to have occur at the, at the election. So this, this election and trying to get that all done before the June first filing deadline. Then we also, down there at the bottom, are planning a reorg, kind of a semi-reorganization. It's not a full-blown reorganization. As you know, Commissioner Ready was the mayor pro tem, so we would need to elect a, a new mayor pro tem.
For the, for the rest of this year?
For the rest of this year, yes. So that, obviously, there's a tradition in that. And if you want to continue to follow that tradition, that would be the next in line, which would be Commissioner Butler. But obviously, this is unique and and not unusual, but that would be something that we would like to do that night. And then I did want to talk a little bit tonight about some of the vacancies that were created from the, from.
Would you talk to about in January? Because you should would have been mayor in the, for the coming year. How are we doing, is there a plan?
I just figured we'd move Wen up a year. The question becomes, who is it the year after that?
Yeah, well, or even this year, it's not two years straight, probably.
No, 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 he would, I think we'd just move him from 2025 up to 2024. And then figuring, depending on who gets elected this fall, I kind of figured the most experienced person with a two-year term, I would figure might throw into the.
The person usually is mayor in year three or year four. We won't have a.
Yeah, so.
Year three person.
Yeah, I, I thought about, I don't have a bright idea, but I just kind of figured, well, it'd make sense to move, just move Wins' year up and then figure out after, after the election, who would be a good potential candidate there.
Yeah, because you got four commissioners coming up, who knows what your configuration is going to be? They could do it any way they want.
Yeah, so, yeah, we'll, we'll get, yeah, it'll be the 2025 one.
So Wen will be the mayor pro tem the rest of this year and next?
No, no, mayor next year. He would be mayor next.
Mayor next year, okay.
Yeah, and then the year, it's the 2025 year that has the question mark on it right now, so.
Okay.
It would simply be whichever two get the most votes, I mean.
Well, but then, then you're mayor the second and third year of your four-year term instead of the third and fourth. But, yeah.
I just think that's, that's probably what's going to happen.
Again, it's up to the people who get elected. I mean, we can't, we can't decide now what's going to happen.
Exactly, so it'll. No, we'll worry about that.
Nobody for year three.
On November seventh, and so, yeah.
So we'll have to figure it out.
Yep, okay, all right, what else you got on there?
But it was nice to have this discussion, so we all know, thank you.
So some of the vacancies, obviously, the, the practice has been for the mayor pro tem to serve on the convention or visitors bureau steering committee. So that would, assuming Wen is elected to, to that position, that would be who would typically serve, didn't know if, so I, I did supply the, kind of the agendas. We supplied the agendas from the most recent meetings that did, and then we also listed what their meeting times are this year. That particular group meets six times a year, the first Wednesday of the month, every other month. So the next meeting is June seventh for that. And so, and then every other Wednesday after that through the end of the year. And there's, there's a copy of their last agenda as well as their, their meeting dates for the rest of the year. And if you know those answers tonight, we can see if the mayor wants to make those appointments or we can talk about them next week, too. But that would be, take up some time and.
You okay with that, Wen? Yeah. There you go.
And then the other two were the MPO Policy Board and the Flynn Hills Area Transportation Agency Board. Linda, you're currently the alternate on those, but I know you had expressed an interest in maybe not being able to do one or both of those.
Well, there are other commissioners that aren't as busy. I just thought it'd be an opportunity for them to get acquainted with the work of the MPO and the ATA on a more detailed basis, rather than just what the final recommendation is when it comes to the commission.
The MPO meets the third win, third Wednesday of each month at three-thirty, either via Zoom or at the public library. And then the ATA meets the first Wednesday of the month, quarterly. So there's quarterly meetings on the first Wednesday of each month at four, out at the, their shops and offices or at, or via Zoom. And I think the MPO's next meeting is May seventeenth and the ATA's next, well, that doesn't make sense. Their next meeting, that one's off a little bit, so it was January fourth.
I think the April meeting, the April meeting might have been off, I don't know. You'll get a notice, yeah.
Any preferences there for folks?
Linda.
I can move this ATA by.
Okay.
I'm going to do the bus.
The bus.
I've never done the bus.
I'll do the A, the MPO, since Wen took ATA.
Okay. All right.
So whatever comes up, John, you're next.
Appreciate that feedback.
No reason to load up one or two people.
Some items to point out on the sixteenth, we did, we already have five items on the general agenda. We have some first readings, we moved to consent agenda. They are the public records ones that we've had, we've had work sessions on both of these, as well as the temporary political signs. These are bringing those in, that we've explained those. And I didn't, we didn't recall that there were any concerns by the commissioners with what was being proposed for those. So we did put them, moved those to the consent agenda. Then we also have on the consent agenda, a request for proposals for the East Manhattan Gateway. So this is the update to our comprehensive plan for that area. We've visited about that a little bit in the past, certainly at the retreat, and the need to really take a, a deep dive and a detailed look at all of the elements of the comprehensive plan and our infrastructure there moving forward. And we would anticipate a commissioner that would, would be wanting to serve on, on that committee.
Where is the East Gateway?
US twenty-four.
All of twenty-four.
So it's the blue township area.
How long is it going to last?
It'll probably be close to a year.
Okay. John, you're up.
There'll be, there'll be others as well coming up on RFP. This is really just the selection committee for the consultant, is what I was specifically referring.
So this isn't the year-long committee?
This isn't the, to be, help pick the consultant.
I would do that.
All right. And then we also have on there that I just wanted to note, a resolution request by the Arts in the Park contractor that they want to do, offer alcohol sales for concerts. And so they need a special event with alcohol for the Arts in the Park. We've had some success in the past of, of doing that. And so I think they're going to identify which concerts or all of the concerts to be able to have that function and essentially have to create a beer garden.
That we have to stay in.
That they have to stay, right?
That's, that's correct. It would be all the concerts except the Juneteenth concert, working with the Juneteenth committee. They have recommended not having alcohol available at that Friday or Saturday, but the other concerts would be included in the request.
Are we going to have a, an announcement of the schedule soon, or how soon's the first one supposed to happen? Do we know?
First Friday in June.
Okay, they got a few weeks yet, okay.
And I believe the schedule of artists is out. There was a TBD on one or two weekends when it initially came out a week or two ago. I don't know if that's been completely filled in, but the schedule is available on the Parks and Rec Facebook page.
Nice, okay.
And we'll work on promoting that some more, because you obviously haven't seen it yet, so.
All right, then on the general agenda, we've got the first reading of the rezoning for the MCM Landing Business Park. This is the land we recently annexed out at the airport. So it's just zoning that now as a, a business park under the development code. Planning board did look at that on April twenty-seventh and did recommend approval. Then two and three are, they're, they're separate, but they're similar. But the number two is the, we are recommending, and the chamber is also recommending that we just amend their current agreement to, regarding the funding for the Elevate Fund. And we've captioned that from a, a two, initial $250,000 payment that could lead to $750 over three installments. So that's the way that's been developed. There was some discussion about possibly doing it with Spark or another entity. And everybody agrees that we should at least this initial and keep it with, just as, as a, the simplest thing to do would be to amend the chamber agreement we already have with them. And since they're the primary facilitator of the request. The third one then is the MATC funding request. This is, Jim will be back and. The third one then is the MATC funding request, this is, Jim will be back in front of you with additional concept development relative to that, this is anticipated, he's looking at twenty-four for a funding proposal, that would be over multiple years. Something that's really, it's still just a discussion, but looking for, he's not quite in the pitch that he was. So he is looking, essentially it's kind of a preview to a budget request item, but I'll update you on it.
So they able to start their construction then?
I think they're getting real close, I think they had to go to loan committee and.
It's not, this isn't, this isn't holding it up in particular.
I believe the comments he made last time, and he'll reiterate, he's trying to leverage this money for additional funds. Our encouragement was to have him come, talk to you now, get on schedule, be part of the outside agencies. If you're in agreement with what he's requesting, we can do an outside agency agreement at the end of the year like we do everybody else. Then every year he could come back during budget season, give the commission an update, and make that additional request. But I think he has a total of five requests that he'll be making five years in a row of the commission.
Okay.
But it's not perpetual.
No, there's a total, last time he was in front of you, it was one point four million.
Yeah.
So it's two hundred and eighty thousand a year, and his pledge is to go leverage other people's money with your money.
Alright, so more to come on, on that particular one.
Thank you.
Then we have several action items relative to the improvement of the Alumni Alley. I don't know why, that's the closest they, or at least the Alumni, the K-State mascot alley renditions. So this would be from Rally Alley and the Aggieville sign due north to more, Little Moro. It also involves a, a big part of it, that particular corridor is a utility easement. So there's a lot of utilities that need to be relocated in order for that to really function safely. The adjacent property owners have agreed to participate and donate easements for those utilities to go further onto their property so that this can occur. And then we have, obviously there are evergies involved. We are also proposing, at least for a period of time, is that five years, for a publicly sponsored trash enclosure on Little Moro. You might recall, we had a presentation to you last year, I think it was last year, two years ago, that long ago? Okay. About how we might be able to try to consolidate trash facilities in Aggieville, because everybody kind of does their own thing, and that doesn't help matters any with regard to being able to do it, but it is, we've even mentioned, you know, is that an area that you municipalize trash service just for that specific area? We kind of do that already with our lighting, that's, those light fixtures are ours, both there downtown, everything else is evergy, so. Or we contract with a, one provider to, to do it. That way you can consolidate, right now it's, it's a free for all, people have relationships with providers, and, and some of them do certain services, that they've had these longstanding relationships, but it's, it's also something that, you know, I think we should talk about in the future about our own trash components on our city, citywide, where we have, you know, half a dozen different companies providing trash service, and all of them are going across every street, every week, versus Wichita segregated all of that, said, company one, you get this portion of town. Company two, you get this portion of town. I'm not, I'm not saying we have to do that, but it's some things to think about when it comes to wear and tear on alleys and, and other streets, so.
We'd like to have a broader conversation with you about this, our experience during, when Midtown was under construction, Howie's provided us pictures of what it's like when they come five days a week. Moving all that trash out to the streets and putting it enclosed and screening it was a temporary fix. But when we lose that space to Midtown, and when other development takes place in Aggieville, they will not have enough room for trash. And haulers are down there multiple times a day trying to keep it sanitary, but they're, they're just lacking a space. With Midtown, obviously on their temporary close, we have poured areas where, with asphalt where trash dumpsters are. Those will go away. We, if we can create an example, which is what we're trying to do here, in addition to compensating these two business owners who have graciously donated permanent pedestrian easements, utility easements, construction easements to allow this improvement to occur, they have lost their trash receptacle area. So creating this and allowing the city to contract for it gives us an opportunity to see how this works. It's not indefinite, it's a five-year period, and then it ends, and then they'll have to, you know, negotiate with us in terms of how we do this. But trash has been a serious issue when Midtown was under construction. Haulers have come to us and said, you don't have enough room in Aggieville for trash, even when they're down there five days a week, six days a week. So either we consolidate and create a more efficiency, a more efficient way of doing this with a private hauler, or we're gonna continue to have trash issues. It becomes unsanitary, and we need to address grease as well, which was also part of that presentation. We still have people hauling it out by the bucket and putting it in a big dumpster, and it's ridiculous. I mean, we can have all those businesses be required to use that PVC pipe within their building, connect to a quick connect on the outside of the building. Many of them do it, and it's, it's seamless and it's clean. If not, we're gonna have grease drug all over these multimillion dollar investments we're making, and it's just gonna deteriorate the investment. So the trash issue is real, there's a lot of properties down there that don't even have trash. They have neighbors, they have to pay that neighbor for trash, access to their trash. If you walk through the alleys these days, there's a lot of padlocks on trash cans, because they've run out of room, and people are just piling trash on somebody else's dumpster. They've started to lock them up. So we either start to address this comprehensively, or the problem's only going to get worse. And we're hearing that from the haulers, we're not, I mean, the businesses are figuring it out, but they're, they're frustrated too. But we're beyond the point of having an issue, it's there, and it, it's very evident. I would encourage you to talk with Howie's Greg Wilson and his associates. They live it, they're down there, they've been super accommodating, but it's becoming an area that a lot of haulers just don't even like to go to, because it's becoming so cumbersome and difficult for them to manage all the different trash needs.
So as Jason said, it, it's a, meant to be a demonstration project of one possible solution that might work, and, and show others in the district that, you know, if we consolidate some of these places in some public areas that maybe are a little bit out of the way, you may have to travel a little bit further to get there. But that's the, that's the goal here to, is to, to try and do that. And we'd have a contract amendment with McCowan Gordon, who did the Rally Alley to complete this project, and then have some financing, project financing on it as well.
Just one quick add, I will just tell you that even the hauler I've talked to is like, I don't care if I'm even a hauler. This needs to be figured out, and we could have multiple haulers. I mean, I'm not suggesting we cut somebody out just to gain some fin, I'm just talking about doing this efficiently to where we can consolidate these things to public space, and people can bring their trash there, and everybody has access to it. And it's not about cutting haulers out, we want to deal with all seven haulers, we'll deal with them all, but we need consolidated trash, we're just running out of space.
And then the fifth item that we have is the commission requested that we put the special alcohol fund in consideration for possible usage to fund the RCPD co-responders. So we're trying to put some history together with you about the, the fund, the requirements of the funds. You know, back in twenty seventeen for that budget, the Pawnee, when the concept first arose, Pawnee Mental Health made that request as part of their special alcohol committee request. So we did have a contract with them for that specific service. We also contract with Pawnee for other special alcohol fund purposes. And that's really one of the, the history of the special alcohol fund is we've always had a contract with an entity that was receiving the funds to ensure, who've always had made a proposal about how the funds are gonna be utilized, and that they fit with the statute. So that's the agreement. So we're recommending that if we deviate from that, that we would have an agreement either with Pawnee, because my understanding is Pawnee has a contract now with RCPD. Either we get added to that, or we have an agreement with RCPD that ensures there's gonna be compliance with that component. One thing I've asked for that I haven't gotten yet was, I asked if the co-responders go outside the city. So I don't know if it's the commission's intent to cover the full contract, my, and, and they, you know, I think the majority of the responses are within the city. You know, do, do co-responders every time technically respond to something that fits with the statutes for their work? Intervention, prevention, education, it's a, mental health, is the, in that case, the statute insinuates that it's gotta be drug or alcohol related, might not always be a drug or alcohol related intervention, but those are the, you know, have, so having that contract about how they're gonna utilize the funds, and then who's responsible for ensuring that would be something that we would recommend from a staff perspective, that's something we've always had with that program. Okay?
We have that in seventeen?
We did, yeah, cuz they, actually the Pawnee was the, was the requesting agency.
The first year.
Yeah.
Might be simpler just go back with that.
So however you want to work that, that's, that's what, we'll have that discussion, and we'd, we'd like to have that direction. I know you've got a law board meeting coming up too.
Yeah. To Ron, cuz our law board meeting is actually gonna be before the commission meeting, but the packet will come out on Thursday, so we'll have the information. I plan to give that to the rest of the law board, so they could take a look at it, so we can kind of discuss it as the law board, what we think about it, to hopefully give the commission some indication of where the law board would go, cuz the law board doesn't want to do it, then be kind of a moot point. But if they say, yeah, this is something we're interested in, then, you know, we move accordingly.
Alright. We're also planning to provide just kind of the history of where, I think there's sixteen agencies that have gotten the funding in the past. So there's likely not gonna be enough funds to meet everybody else's past funding levels. If you lower it by that hundred and eighty thousand or whatever it is, I think that's about what it is for twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, unless, I don't know what the prediction is, with the tax receipts going up, it might absorb some of it.
Sure, and, and there's a little bit of carryover as well. If, if the last two quarterly payments have exceeded our expectations, if that continues, that'll be good news, and there'll be more revenue. If it, if it stays on the, the five-year average, we've, excluding COVID, that's around four eighty-five, five hundred thousand, so. Anyway, we're, we're gonna try and give you all that background as well.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's the thing nice about the consolidated board, is they're working with a bigger pool of money, which they could decide to use some of the other money for, to make up that, if that's what they decide.
Sure.
But I realize that, you know, that's gonna require some priorities, they're gonna have to set priorities, and, and the idea that everybody's gonna always get the same amount of money each year has never been realistic, I mean, you know, they, they shouldn't be counting on that. And so, you know, I realize that there'll be some headaches there, some people have sent notes about that, worried about their particular funding, but in my mind, you know, out of all the stuff we do, this is the, the best one, priority wise. And then, of course, the other impact is, of course, it will have a significant budget impact on the mill levy at RCPD and where I'm. And my assumption was that they would be utilized throughout the county. I mean, wherever RCPD operates, the co-responders would be there, just because it's coming out of this fund shouldn't restrict where they go. I don't think there's, there's any reason to do that.
Right, and that was just, the question, is it, is this an eighty-twenty thing, or are we gonna fund it all? I mean, that was just that kind of direction.
I think we just, we just fund it all because, you know, that, that's gonna be an advantage to the county, you know, because that, that's gonna lower their, but it will also lower ours. I mean, basically, if that whole amount goes against RCPD's budget, then we will end up on our property tax mill levy, eighty percent of it, and the county twenty percent, but the taxpayer's gonna get a hundred percent, and, and that's the way I analyze it.
Alright, what else you got?
Alright, and looking at the sixth, we've got, on a bid award, we'll have the next phase two of the, our annual concrete street maintenance work. And then we did have, we've got a donor-initiated public art project down at the Flat Hills Discovery Center, so we'll have a donor-initiated agreement. We are anticipating, I had a good, we had a good meeting with the members of the Sunset Zoo Trust, and they're wanting to move forward to sponsor a project, so this would be an RFQ for, to go out for professional services to, to develop some thirty percent design plans, so selecting that, that consultant to help with that, utilizing the city's, the ultimate improvement will go on city ground, so we need to follow the city process, so they're, they're fine with that. They just wanted to know what the steps were, and so we, we've had, we had a very good meeting, and, and they're anxious to start. They've done quite a bit of fundraising already, and they're anxious to do more, so.
What, what are they telling with the project?
Uh, they're, they're wanting to focus really on the children's area, South America, and Africa.
Okay.
So, some movement going around.
What about the shelter house, and did I see that somebody's doing something with it too?
I think they're looking at restaurants, I know.
The, the existing stone pavilion was part of their Grow Green Match Day funding.
Okay.
And so that's separate from this project, and they raised twenty thousand dollars in the neighborhood for those repairs. This RFP would be for those areas that Ron mentioned, and would be intended to, they wouldn't have to do them all at once. Like, like Expedition Asia, they had to do all of those improvements all at one time. This could be a phased approach where they do, you know, over three or four different areas of the zoo. So as fundraising occurs, they could complete one phase at a time potentially.
Okay.
We didn't anticipate having a commissioner on that committee, but if, if you wanted to be on that selection committee, that'd be something that you could think about. I don't need to know, we'll, we'll have another briefing session prior to that. We also have an RFP, these are our SCADA upgrades at our wastewater treatment plant, so this is our communication equipment that all of the different pumping stations and, and different equipment talk to each other, so it's pretty critical, important, and needs some upgrades. Those are all technical, so I'm not sure you, we need a commissioner on that one, but again, if somebody's interested in that, we certainly wouldn't be opposed to it. And then we do plan to have the RFP for the animal shelter services on that, and we assume you'd probably want to have a commissioner involved in that particular one. So, could be thinking about that, and let us know.
I'll be happy to do that.
Alright. Gotcha. And then another RFP that'll be coming up, just for spreading the, spreading the work of commissioner interviews would be the CECO RFP for the ball fields and tennis courts, which is part of the quality life sales tax. So that one's probably coming up in a meeting or two after that, right, July or late June?
We have June twentieth as our target, we were intending to take that draft RFP to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board at their June fifth meeting, and then follow up with you all for concurrence to advertise that.
Alright, and then the general agenda items, we'll have the, anticipate having the four oh seven potawatomi, which we pulled. If you didn't hear, that was a, there was a publication error on that particular project before, for the public hearing at the planning board, which made it. at the planning board, which made it a problem. So we pulled it and are starting over with the correct publication, and starting a hearing back at the planning board. That's on the, on May twenty-fifth is when it's scheduled to go to them, and then would come to you on, on the sixth.
So the planning board's going to vote on this?
Again, yep. Yep. They'll have a, they'll have a new public hearing based on the appropriate publication and go from there. And then we'll have a municipal, another municipal facility review. This is on the USD three Central Kitchen project out on Hayes Drive. So you might recall that we were working with the school district to get some easement donated to build the wider sidewalk. The goal is to build a sidewalk along Hayes Drive from McCall all the way to Casmet on that.
East side.
East side, and we have nice big ditches there that need to, if you're going to build a sidewalk. So a combination of having to put, we're going to put storm sewer in on that side in order to accommodate that, and, because they wanted to maximize their parking for their employees there, and so they dedicated some easement at no cost to us. We did the agreement with them, and, and hired their contractor to build that segment of infrastructure for the storm sewer as well as the sidewalk, which left them a very limited space for landscaping. So they wanted to go through the municipal facilities review. It's a little different than it was at the school sites, but in this one, I would say that we're certainly benefiting a lot more. So the balancing of the different agencies, I think, is more, more at play here and has obvious benefits to both agencies. The, we'll have a first reading of the rezoning of, this is the Reserve at the Country Club. And I forget the name of the road. Do any of you remember that? So it's on the east side of the Country Club, off of Eelers that goes back.
Mulligan Place.
Mulligan Place, okay. And so originally developed, I think, for about a dozen or fourteen townhomes, and there were only two duplexes built.
I think they built four buildings, but, yeah, never did finish it.
Right, so that, they're wanting to convert that to, I want to say thirty-eight maybe or forty units? So that's the item that's coming up before you. It's a rezoning.
Will they be demolishing what's there?
I am not sure.
Or just filling in?
I, I don't know if they're working around them. I'm, I think they are demolishing them.
That's what I thought too, where I heard that.
From the rendering I saw was all big new stuff.
Everything's going to be new.
Yeah, but there were questions about their traffic study. That's why it got tabled. It hasn't been heard at the planning board yet. It's been, it was tabled for more information. And that's planning to also be on the twenty-fifth for the planning board. And then we have some, on Browning Avenue, some townhomes proposed just to the north of Kimball on the east side.
Yeah, there's a.
There's a gap there. We, matter of fact, it was, we had a benefit district for a stormwater improvement project. You might recall that lot, so it's a, it's kind of a, I think, I don't know if there's two or three lots there, but they're vacant. I think that's all a single family now, and so they want to rezone it for townhomes.
At least, at least they're deep, deep lots, so they can do more work.
They really are.
So anyway, that's, that's something that will be coming on the twenty, twenty-fifth as well. And let's see, work sessions on the back. On the twenty-third, two weeks from tonight, Evergy asked for some time, and they're tentatively scheduled here. They're still working to confirm that they're available. They wanted to brief you on some new transmission line projects that they're planning that may have an impact on, on some of our, within the city limits and routing. And then.
No more in Northview.
The.
We have plenty of their big towers in Northview.
Their pavement management update with Rob, that will be here to, to, we had, we had the consultants come in and update the, the study and the analysis, and some of their findings and recommendations moving forward. And then he also wants to have a conversation with you about, when do we think we'd like to re-up on the question, to renew it? Obviously, it's not buying as much as, because of inflation, we're not getting as much for, over a ten-year period from what we anticipated. So whether we want, we want to keep it at point two, or if you want to raise it a little bit. So those are, he'd like some initial discussion on that. And then what, what date might be appropriate to target for asking the, the public to consider a renewal on it? I know we've got a fifth Tuesday in there on the thirtieth, so not planning to meet. And then on June thirteenth, the cemetery master plan would come before you, and then we'll start our first budget work session, and then the budgets will dominate through the summer, with the end of August getting into some storm water and watershed and best management practices, fee in lieu of, a, a big stormwater work session there towards the end of August. Mayor, that's all I had to cover.
Okay. You guys got anything else? Linda, anything we need to know about?
Uh, just to say that I sat in on a common table meeting last week, the night of the city commission meeting, actually, and they're working with the school district on a, some kind of, a contract for the cafeteria area at the ninth grade attendance center, or to be named whatever. And they are also planning a Thanksgiving meal here in the community. And so they're working on the logistics for that. So that's, that's great, because last year we didn't have one, so.
Were, were they looking at providing a place to serve the meals to with them?
They're looking at one of their respective churches, which one's biggest. I mean, they were, originally, they were thinking the Methodist, United Methodist Church, but then evidently, there's another church that has a bigger area, open space area.
But they wouldn't, they don't want the school district to, to have, provide the facility for the meals. They're just going to help, they're going to cook them.
Uh huh.
Okay.
And they're going to carry, I think they're going to cook the meal and then take the food to the, to the church. I don't know where, they might be, cooked it one or two churches and take it to, but it's, they're not going to try to cook it onsite and serve it to, I think. Logist, I mean, just, need too many people, too many volunteers.
Okay. Is that it? John, you got anything?
Nope.
When?
I'm good.
All right, I think we're done here. We have a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Morris, second by Commissioner Butler to adjourn. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Herr Hassal?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.